Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, April 13th at 7:00 p.m. We are meeting at the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room. We have a full forum tonight, and so I'd like to call our first public hearing, or open our first public hearing. I'm going to make a motion to open a public hearing pursuant to the Town of Lakeville zoning bylaw, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, on Thursday, April 13th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. at the Lakeville Police Station, 323 Bedford Street. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on the acceptance of the renumbering and revisions of the zoning bylaw of the town from its original numbering as amended through November 14th, 2022, to the numbering or codification arrangement, sequence, and captions, and the comprehensive revisions to the text of the zoning bylaw as set forth in the final draft of the code of the Town of Lakeville dated March 2023. Said codification of the zoning bylaw having been done under the direction of the Planning Board and being a compilation and comprehensive revision of the present zoning bylaw, including amendments thereto, all zoning bylaws as amended heretofore, enforced, shall be repealed, except that such repeal shall not affect any suit or proceeding pending as the result of an existing law. The zoning bylaw shall be codified as Chapter 270 of the General and Zoning Bylaws of the Town of Lakeville, Massachusetts.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor to open the hearing?
Aye.
Motion carries. The hearing is open. The proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw may be viewed at the Lakeville Town Clerk's Office in Town Hall, 346 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass., 02347, by appointment only, and so on. So this is basically a housekeeping matter that was tasked to the town to renumber, and as I just read in the motion, fix up their bylaws, the zoning bylaws. So that said, does any Planning Board member have any discussion on this matter?
I'd say that it's very similar to what a lot of towns use. It's an electronic version. It makes things easy to search, easy to find, very user-friendly. So I think it's a good change. You know, Lilian's been working very hard on it. So it's finally happening.
You good, Nora?
I'm good.
Good.
Jack, you good, buddy? Anybody from the public like to speak to this? Come right up.
Hey, Scott, Rush Pond Road. Just a quick question. As part of this, will you be updating the zoning map to reflect the current zoning, not the 2018, or has that already been updated?
I don't think that's part of this actual...
Then it's a...
This is only the text.
Information question. I'm just wondering, because the language in the map, you had that clause in there about litigation, and part of the problem was the language and it not being on the map. So I'm just wondering if there's a plan as part of this exercise or following this exercise?
Once this passes, then we would update the zoning map to reflect it.
That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Anybody else? That said, I make a motion to recommend approval on Town Meeting Floor by the Planning Board to adopt these changes. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Being that it is 7:05, we have a second public hearing. Is this because it's a citizen petition, something that I should read to open? Yep. So I move that the Lakeville Planning Board hold a public hearing pursuant to the Town of Lakeville zoning bylaw, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, on Thursday, April 13th, 2023, at 7:05 p.m. at the Lakeville Police Station, 323 Bedford Street. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on a proposed amendment to the Lakeville zoning bylaw petitioned by Daniel Cooney et al. to amend Section 4.1 Table of Use Regulations, subsection 4.1.2 Business Use, and add the following new language: Retail, office, or service business, minimum of 1,500 square feet with up to 7,000 square feet of associated storage and warehouse distribution per special permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And it shows a change to the table of uses to be special permit under the business use. So our motion to open that hearing has been made. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is open. Being that this is a citizen's petition, I would ask that the petitioner please present.
Okay. Hi, Daniel Cooney, 59 Main Street. I know most of you now, because as you know, I've been pursuing this, pursuing your support, advice, guidance for the last two years on this project. We're a small business in Lakeville. We built our business 15 years ago, and this opportunity came available that we could put our small distribution center with our offices directly across the street from our house. It seemed like a great idea, and we're pursuing it. I've taken your advice to, you know, bring it to the town. So I guess it's now on the warrant for the town meeting. And I'm back just asking for your support for this idea so that we can keep our business here. And I think it's going to be, I think it will be good for the town and good for the neighborhood for a long time to come if you allow it. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any about it. I brought my logistics guy here and my nephew, who's a new resident to Lakeville three years ago. And that's it for me. Is there anything I can...
Well, I just...
Did you all receive the packet I sent out?
Yes. So just to clear up any confusion, I haven't changed my mind on it, Dan. I don't support it. When we said you should do a citizen petition, that was, if you wanted it, that you should pursue it and bring it to Town Meeting Floor, which is happening, so you will get the town to vote on it. I, again, haven't changed my stance that I feel like your business might be a good fit in it. However, it's the Pandora's Box that we open to anybody else in business zone. I still feel that having small warehouses in our business district could limit or make other desirable businesses like restaurants not be able to go in because of that use. In addition, with what you've presented, there's no language for definitions or the special permit process. So when it goes to a zoning board of appeals, then it's basically asking for a variance rather than a Planning Board through special permit with conditions and things that would control the use.
Well, from what I understand, that is the process that the zoning board has, that they can impose conditions depending on the specificity of the site. And that's what I understand was the right way to go about doing it. I don't think that, you know, that any, anything, you know, your desire to have restaurants there, I think, I think you've got to weigh, you know, the site that it is, and that's why I think going to a special permit is the solution. It still brings and gives some control by the town, site by site, to find out whether, you know, that's good for the town. And, you know, I was very transparent with all my neighbors. And, you know, if you talked to most of them, specifically the ones that live behind the Dollar Store there, they don't want another fast food restaurant, or any restaurant for that matter. They would prefer to have something like we have. It's less traffic, less noise, less hours. We're a good neighbor. I think as Planning Board representatives of our town, you've got to listen to the people, especially the people that are abutting there. I haven't met anyone that's in a butter that is against it so far. The majority that I've approached are. I think you have to weigh that. And in terms of having, you know, little mini warehouses up and down the road of Lakeville, I think it's, I don't think it's going to happen. And I think the idea of it is actually a little bit ridiculous, I have to say. I mean, that's not going to happen. And one more thing I could say to that. You know, business is changing. Who knew Amazon would be a thing, you know, 20, 30 years ago? People are going to buy all their stuff online. Malls are going to be torn up because people don't shop retail as much anymore. You know, a small business like mine, and there's a lot of small businesses around here that basically sell things through eBay or whatever, and they send them out. And a small warehouse like ours, and again, I stress small, the warehouse component that we're talking about and what it would be limited to would be under 7,000 square feet. The Dollar Store, which is essentially a warehouse that people shop in, is 12,000 square feet. I mean, that's, you know, twice the size of the little space that we want to store things. I live across the street from the Dollar Store. They got people coming up, they're emptying the trash at 4 o'clock in the morning. It's ridiculous. Our neighbors don't want that. I don't want that. So I don't know what you want to put there. But I don't think you've been asked for a better business from a more committed citizen of this town for the last 22 years. I mean, we've given everything we can to this town. So I think that should be considered. I hope that your opinion isn't everybody's opinion, and I suppose that that's why I'm here, to appeal to those, you know, who might, you know, consider, you know, this, I think, good thing for the town. Even if, you know, I looked at that, you got a fair argument, like, well, what if you move out? Well, and again, I say, this is a perfect-sized, small business that'll have three components to it. Offices, you know, a lot of businesses run just offices. About 2,000 square feet of offices, 2,000 square feet of retail, and 6,000 square feet of storage space with one dock door, limited hours, limited traffic, no trash. I don't know what you, why you wouldn't want this for the town. And I don't see how you can say that this will replicate in a negative way, especially when you have the safeties involved in the special permit. That's why we did special permit. So that's my feedback on that. Is there any other questions, or is Mark the only one speaking here?
I'm the only one running the meeting, so I'll ask that question. And again, Dan, it's, in my eyes, it's a bad idea because it's not you. Your business might be ideal in that, but it is another applicant down the road. And once one special permit's granted, precedent is set, you can't just deny him because it's not named Dan Cooney. It has to be a substantial reason to deny a special permit. So if somebody else comes in with something that's a similar use, you pretty much have to grant it. So anyway, I'd like to get to other Planning Board members now if they'd like to make comments. So I'm going to start with Michelle.
I'll say that, you know, I'd like to see it go to Town Meeting. You're still going to have to go up against concerned citizens like Mr. Scott and the people that will say, you know, no warehouses whatsoever. But I think you have every right to be heard and let the people vote and see what they, see what they say.
Well, we know that, Nora.
Now, with the dock door, just one single dock, like an elevated dock? Or even elevated dock, or you're talking about like just an overhead door that's going to, you know, trucks going to pull up, but, I mean, there's 18 wheelers coming in there and loading and loading stuff?
I brought my logistics guy here. Kyle, you can answer the specifics, but I can give you... We have one 40-foot trailer that comes per month, usually after 8 o'clock, always after 8 o'clock. We have two vans.
I don't want to get into the site plan review of your potential project because we're just looking at the zoning and the change to the zoning right now.
It's a valid question, but I hear you.
So, and again, that plays out to, we'd have to ask that question to every possible applicant ever in advance. It's, that's the trickiness to us making a zoning change is it's forever, and everyone else is afforded the same by right use then. I understand it's special permit, but once it's granted, once it's, a precedent has been set.
Okay, but by the nature of special permit, that allows oversight specifically to the site, to the project, and...
Not by the Planning Board?
Well, the zoning board is just as important as you guys, aren't they?
Well, they're not elected. They're appointed.
Huh?
They're not elected. They're appointed, actually. So it is a little different, just...
Okay, but I mean, but they're both built, they're, we're talking, this is a zoning thing, and this is, this is what, you know, and they still have oversight. I think it's fair, only fair.
Well, I think a lot of people look at the Zoning Board of Appeals as the people that bend the rules, and Planning Board is the people that enforce the rules. So I think that's your difference. But Nora, do you have any comments on this?
I'm just, I'm going to say three things. Having been on the Zoning Board of Appeals, I agree wholeheartedly with what you said. There's more of a tendency to bend the rules than follow the rules on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm not in favor of this because of the precedent it was set, but I am in favor of allowing the town to vote on it, and that's the direction I believe you should go.
Is that even contested here? I mean, if you said, no, you don't want the town to vote on it, would that happen? Could that happen? Do you have that power?
No.
No.
Okay, okay. So it's, okay.
On the site, that's where it should be. It should be for the town.
You're going to allow the town to vote, but you're already going to vote. Okay, thank you.
We're hearing it tonight. It's going to Town Meeting. The town will vote on it. That's, that's...
The only question is whether or not I get your blessing or not.
That's it.
I see, I see.
Jack, do you have any comments?
I'm all in favor of going to the Town Meeting. I think it's local business, small business.
So just to be clear, Jack, when we make a recommendation tonight, it's not to send it to Town Meeting. It's going to Town Meeting. Our recommendation will be whether we would recommend approval of it or not at Town Meeting.
So if I understand this right, you're here at a hearing to vote, whether you support it, or you don't have any neutral opinion, or you don't support it? Is that right? Am I understanding that right?
Yep.
Again, I would really appreciate your support. I think it's a good thing. You obviously don't support it, but I hope the others maybe get three votes. I'd really appreciate that, because, again, I think it's a good thing, and I don't know what else. Any other questions that you have for me that I can...
John, do you have anything else? Does anyone else from the public want to speak to this? I think we have an extra mic up here. Just come right up to the microphones.
I'm sorry. This might give you a point. I just had a decision already, but I'm going to read it anyway to get it on the record.
Yep, just if you could state your name and address for the record so that when the minute people...
It's coming. I'm just saying, you know, my name is Claire LaPointe. I live at 61 Main Street, across the street from 58 Main Street, a lot owned by Dan and Christine Cooney. And in their desire to build the 2,000-square-foot office building with 6,000 square feet of storage and wholesale distribution for their small business, they are requesting, in addition to the business used by law, that would include a path for small businesses to apply for a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It is my hope that you would vote to support this option and other small businesses that would be interested in our town. So I hear that. You're not going to do that already. So anyway, I'm still going to go forward. With the requirement for zoning board approval for this type of project, it ensures that the residents would have a venue to add their support or cite their objections to any small business requests that would impact their neighborhood. In speaking with my neighbors who live adjacent to 58 Main Street and many residents who live at Woods Edge, who signed the first draft of a petition to revise the business zone bylaw, they indicated to me that they fully support Dan and Christine's vision for this property. We all agree that it will fit comfortably with our neighborhood and relieve our concerns about any other businesses that you might approve for this site. I would like to review some of the negative experiences we face with the businesses in the Dollar Tree building. Again, Dan mentioned a few: scattered trash in the street and in our yards, bright lights on the Dollar Tree store, flashing lights emanating from the smoke shop, increased traffic and accidents, tractor trailer trucks unload product starting around 10, 11 o'clock p.m., and dumpsters that pick up starting 4:00 a.m. with no regard to our neighborhood. Now, I know you've said you're not really deciding on these issues. It's just whether you're going to support the zoning bylaw, but, you know, this is what I wrote. In closing, we trust Dan and Christine to respect our neighborhood because they are part of our neighborhood. They live at 59 Main Street and will always be easy to find if someone needs to find the owner of the building, which is an issue with the Dollar Tree building. I don't even know who owns it anymore. You have to go in and ask who owns the building, find that person, talk to them, because I've done that before about the lights that were on all night, and the owner didn't even know. It was like that. So he put them off around 10:30 or so, I believe. So, you know, with these thoughts in mind, it seems the only way to move forward with the proposed project is to revise the business bylaw. The three abutting neighbors to the property at 58 Main Street and many of our neighbors at Woods Edge request that you give a favorable vote to the additional language to subsection 4.1.2 Business Use in a Business Zone to give small businesses like Heavenly Spirits a chance to enhance Lakeville's business community. And, you know, I hear what you're saying. It's, you know, setting that precedent. And I've been to the Zoning Board of Appeals about light issues and big signs and all these things. And, you know, they take things into consideration. Again, I wasn't on the board and didn't hear everything, different cases, that they bend the rules. But they pretty much, in the ones I've been involved with, was the Dollar Tree sign that they wanted so big, and when they went back to the, you know, it has to meet the bylaws. They seem pretty, to me, mostly abiding by the bylaws and take into respect when people come for variances on land and this and that. They're very good about looking at the plans, and they do, I think they do a good job. And I don't think they would be apt to say, oh, well, we let this person, so I guess we'll have to do that. They're not, I didn't find them willing-nilling. I didn't... So, you know, not trusting another board to be fair and to decline.
It's not a matter of fairness. It's just a matter of precedent in that we give up all of our business properties to a use that then may not become so desirable as the Cooney's business because of precedent that they set.
Right. But they listen to the neighbors. They listen to the people who come to speak. They do. And, you know, I'm not going to convince you to support it because your minds are already made up, but I just wanted to say, you know, this neighborhood deals with a lot of stuff. And, you know, if you find any other way to get his business built on that particular lot, you know, maybe you could give some advice, because we all want that there. And, you know, we suffer with many things in that area. Okay? Thank you very much for listening.
Scott, do you have a comment?
I feel that the board is doing the right thing, having it go to Town Meeting. Dick Scott, Rush Pond Road. I think the board is making the right decision, having it go to Town Meeting. I do have a couple of questions, and I don't want to get into site plan review, but I'm just wondering how 7,000 feet was established as a part of the bylaw. It seems to me if we're talking about a bylaw that the Board, Planning Board, was writing, a different number might be there, perhaps a smaller number. So the first question I have is, why is the number 7,000 and not 5?
Yeah, that would be a question for Mr. Cooney. I think that's based on his needs.
Right. Go ahead.
Can I answer it? Yeah. So it was a number that fit comfortably within that site. Would never be bigger, and in fact, we were only planning ourselves to go 6,000. And I think in one of the discussions with the board last summer, it was mentioned, well, maybe, you know, make a little room there. And on the other end of it, there is, you know, it was this bylaw amendment is making a minimum of 1,500 square feet of retail and office space as well. So it's never going to be just a distribution center. It's always going to be a minimum of, you know, 1,500 square feet is a lot. And we're planning to 2,000 on that anyway. But for that lot size, it's a comfortable fit. It'll never be bigger. There'll always be some retail. There'll always be some office. And there'll always be a small storage component. And again, that's, what we plan to do is, in our storage component, half the size of the Dollar Store building. So, and again, no garbage, no lights, no noise. I, that's, that's the answer, Dick.
Okay. Just to follow up, directed to you, Mr. Chairman. Let's say this does get approved at Town Meeting, and at some point in the future, the current owner or a future owner decided that they wanted to have a bigger warehouse. Okay? I mean, we have situations in town where businesses decide, for example, a dog kennel wants to be bigger, so they can go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and ask for a change. And I'm concerned about writing a bylaw for a specific use that down the road, we will encounter someone else who's not as benevolent to the town as Mr. Cooney, that's just strictly in it to maximize their profits. So I'm always in a caution mode when it comes to new zoning bylaws. Does the existing business bylaw go by right or by special permit?
Existing business is by right.
Okay, and that's another thing. If I were to bring a town petition, I would be saying that the Planning Board should change the zoning so that those business things are by special permit, like the proposed bylaw change. Because I think special permit gives the zoning board more power. So I like that part of this, but I don't like, number one, the precedent setting. And I'm also concerned about the fact that warehouse is a sensitive thing to me. Okay? When I first moved up here, the architectural standard for big buildings was space metal buildings. Okay? And I happen to know that there's good coverage, but a space metal building on some of our main streets as part of business is not what I'd like to see. And I don't know if our architectural standards that we've just recently adopted a year ago would protect us from that kind of installation. Clearly, for example, the funeral home next to the T-Station area is very architecturally pleasing, but the storage area is atrocious because it's a storage area and it's a business. And I'd be very concerned that architectural standards don't get waived. Now, I'll cite a very simple example. When Rhino brought forward their second proposal, they talked about half a bigger warehouse, but in that bylaw change, we talked about waiving the architectural standards because it didn't apply to warehouses. So I'm a little concerned about opening up another front. I think if we're going to do anything to promote business that would be protective of Lakeville, it shouldn't be this. It should be a bylaw that says that if you do it, it's by special permit, and it shouldn't have a $7,000 warehouse limit on it. So I'm just expressing my feelings. I'm only one person at Town Meeting. But I do think that it going to Town Meeting is totally appropriate.
So, you know, your comment, Dick, about the architectural standards was a good one. We had actually reached out to council on this, the zoning bylaw as presented, which wouldn't be legal, however, as a policy question for the Planning Board, it's... However, as a policy question for the planning board, it's, a broad usage of any term without definition leaves the term open to interpretation. So there is no special permit criteria listed, therefore only the criteria not more detrimental may be considered, which is not a great standard, which is another reason why. And I don't like the idea of the planning board not being a special permit granting authority because I think we would do a better job at site plan review, laying the conditions on something like that. But again, that would be as a stopgap. If it did pass, that would be the only way I would want to approve it, would be planning board being special permit granting authority, not zoning board of appeals. However, it still doesn't not, it doesn't unopen Pandora's box.
Can I respond?
Absolutely.
So as I see it, the only precedent that it's going to set is that the zoning board will have the special permit. And I have to ask this. Are you telling me that there's no other bylaws that have special permit without details of what that exact special permit is? I don't believe that.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
I don't believe that. Do you know?
So planning board does handle site plan review for any new business over 1,500 square feet. So everything has to come through your site plan.
Anyway, it does.
But we wouldn't, because zoning board is the special permit granting authority for what you're looking for, we wouldn't have a site plan review. We would be able to make recommendations to zoning board, but we wouldn't go through the whole site plan review process. So that, I do share that.
I question that. It's just we wouldn't be putting the conditions for the special permit.
Yeah, we could review it and send comments.
Yeah, I question that. Of course, the planning board would still have review. And yes, the only difference is that the zoning board of appeals would be able to address this particular and every future particular proposal. So that's a precedent that you're afraid of because you think they're softer than you? What was the word you used?
They're more lenient.
Lenient, more lenient.
But my concern also goes to the point, a person on this board serves for five years. There's a lot more continuity that happens on this board than there is on the zoning board of appeals. Okay? Here you have people serving for five years at a time. Zoning board, I think it's by appointment. So it can be one year, it can be two years, it can be three years.
So it's really hard to say. It's just.
Right. It's hard to say, but you don't have the continuity, I believe, that you have on the zoning, the planning board.
I think that's a real vague and general opinion, to be fair. I mean, how can you say, so your opinion is more valuable because you're voted in than those guys? You trust yourself a lot better?
I think the important opinion here is that of the town. And that's what I'm saying.
Well, of course, and that's where we're at. So I'm just getting your opinion now and I see that. And I see that it's sort of slanted one way and I get it. So the town will be the ones to vote and I think they have to vote whether or not you have integrity more than the zoning board or 80 of the town citizens and neighbors that have some say in this. If they have more precedent or care more about the town or more authority to say what's in their backyard or front yard than you do, I guess that's what it's going to come down to at the ballot, at the town meeting, I guess. Am I right? That's what it comes down to, right?
Mr. Chair, I just want to make one statement. It's not about integrity. It's about the interpretation that this board may do of a bylaw and what the zoning board of appeal may interpret that bylaw has nothing to do with integrity.
Okay, so let me clarify. So it's the, say it again, the interpretation. So you guys have a better qualified, more qualified ability to interpret.
He didn't say any.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to clarify.
No, we interpret it what we believe the correct way.
Which is more qualified than the zoning board?
No, the zoning board of appeals may believe that they are interpreting it the correct way.
Oh, oh, I see.
Okay, that's why you have the two boards. It's not anything about integrity.
Okay. Okay. So it's your opinion against theirs. They might think that they're more qualified than you.
No, no, it's only going to be their opinion because it's not us.
Right.
Okay.
So Mr. Scott, do you have something else?
I just want to close with the fact that we have to be very, very careful about precedent setting. Okay? And I've got to give kudos to Dan for carrying it to petition so it goes to town meeting. But I've been involved for two years in litigation with the town. And that's very, very expensive to the town. It's very, very expensive to the neighbors. Litigation hangs on interpretation of the bylaws, of what's by right, by court cases, which is changing all the time, by land court rulings. Don't open up another can of worms to cause the town to have to play solemn as it's been described, okay? If there's things to fix, fix them. But this is going, I think this is going in the wrong direction and it's just, again, my personal opinion.
May I respond to that?
Go right ahead.
I think when 80 abutters or so say, we'd be happy to have this building in this particular spot, I think you should listen to them. They're Lakeville citizens. They live there. They're the ones that have trash in the yard from the Dollar Store and the other associated pizza shop.
Dan, we're going to listen to them at town meeting. I hope you bring them all. We'll hear them there.
Very good.
All right?
So are you voting on it?
Yep.
Can we make it official?
I make a motion to close the hearing and to not recommend approval on town meeting floor.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to say aye because I do think it should be planning board, not zoning board.
Aye.
Motion carries with the majority. As a all-off housekeeping thing, I don't believe that I closed the hearing for the first codification thing, so I'm going to make a motion to close the hearing for the codification public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That hearing is closed as well. Derek, you're going to be on deck. I'm just going to do one quick. I have a memo here for our fourth public hearing, which is a continuation of our previous public hearing for 13 Main Street. And the applicant has requested a continuance to the April 27th meeting. So I make a motion to continue the 13 Main Street site plan review until April 27th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is 44 Clearport Road, which is a continuance of another public hearing. If anybody wants to see that plan, you're welcome to come up and take a look or scoot around. But the planning board can see it. Again, anybody in the audience that wants to come up and see it, feel free.
Good evening. Fred Keeler from Hancock Associates representing Mr. Maxi, the applicant. When we gave our initial presentation in the fall, this was the plan we presented and needed some waivers and the board expressed some concerns regarding some of the waivers we were asking for and asked us to look at, this plan shows country drainage basically pitching to a proposed infiltration basin on the side of roadway. You asked us to look at conventional drainage and provide a plan to that effect, which we will present tonight and get some feedback from you. And then in the interim, since our first meeting, Mr. Maxi has had some additional wetland flagging done and surveyed. We did a couple of test pits in the locations on either side of the road for potential stormwater to establish groundwater elevations. Your peer review consultant witnessed those and Mr. Resnick was there as well to witness the pits. Those were done about a month ago roughly. And these basins were revised a little bit to reflect the groundwater elevations that we found. Sure, just to recap, this is the plan that we presented back in November. It shows just a road going over the existing driveway, cul-de-sac, two lots, one being the solar farm and the remainder of the country club being the second lot. The, we did look at a country drainage, a traditional drainage plan per your request, which is reflected on this drawing. One thing we did before I get into it is we extended the cul-de-sac down to the parking lot.
So it would create another lot there?
Potentially.
Okay.
Yes, potentially. It wouldn't be the same two lots and possibly a third lot that Mr. Maxi is considering. The reason we extended the cul-de-sac was to take advantage of the existing parking lot pavement where the previous cul-de-sac originally was proposed. We had a lot of new asphalt on either side because that's wooded and undeveloped. By extending the cul-de-sac down to the parking lot, we're taking advantage of existing pavement, so we're not creating as much new impervious surface area. This plan is the conventional drainage plan that you requested, but we have some reservations about it and I can get into those as we talk about it. One thing is in order to get these catch basins to drain back down the road, we have to elevate the road by three to four feet over its current grades. And in order to elevate it three to four feet, we have to install retaining walls, which are highlighted in orange. Drainage, the pipe system is highlighted in blue. So we don't think that's a good design and impacts the neighbors. It raises the road. The road's already above a couple of feet above the neighbors' properties. Now it'll be four or five feet above their abutting properties. Walls along either side. It's doable, but we think the country drainage option is preferable and less impactful. We would have a stormwater management basin on the left side of the road and a rain garden would work to run off from the cul-de-sac. These are designed to mitigate the stormwater runoff. I would say that all the drainage, there's a little bit of a redrilling along this edge so that to park for you, all the drainage wants to come this way now. So to do this, we're kind of forcing drainage to the other side of the roadway against, you know, where it naturally wants to go.
We did a, hence part of the elevation of the road process is to be able to achieve that pitch?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. We also revisited the country drainage with the same extended cul-de-sac, which would be shown on this drawing. So we still have a stormwater management basin here. We still have a rain garden to pick up whatever additional runoff to the parking lot from that direction. It doesn't require elevating the road. The grades are almost the same as the road is today. One of the waivers we did ask for was street lighting. These plans both show street lighting because we know you asked us to include that last time. And I know Mr. Resnick wanted the sidewalk switched to the other side of the road. In order to do country drainage, we have to have a sidewalk on this side. And I understand because of the playground across the street, there was a desire to have it on the opposite side. We could deal with that with crosswalks or some other method to get people across the roadway to the playground. So in summary, we feel that the country drainage is the best option. It mimics the existing conditions. The drainage continues to go in the same direction it goes today. We don't have to elevate the roadway and impact the neighbors with retaining walls. And we'd like to get your feedback. Ideally, we get some feedback tonight and we select an option and then submit revised to definitive plans.
So we've got a couple of different things going on there. I guess the streetlights, I'd love to hear comments from the Curtis's and the other neighbor on the streetlights at the beginning of the road, just because they'd be the most affected by those. And I know you could, there are some desirable lights that you could put on a pole that really just broadcasts below the light, you know? We'd only be lumens on the street, but I want to make sure that the neighbors, if we do have streetlights, that the neighbors are on board with that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Derek Maxi, 130 St. Plesor Road. We have about five post lights on the side now and we intentionally kept them just below like the fence height for the Curtis side. The other side's wooded, so I assume they can probably still see the lights. But anything like that works for me, whatever we could make both neighbors happy.
Well, I'd like, if you're going to put a light, I'd like the downward broadcasting light.
Yep.
They make some really high quality ones now. And again, I think it's, you're more open on the Curtis family's side. So I just want to make sure that the neighbors aren't feeling like they're negatively impacted from there. Have more lights further in then if that's the case.
And I can always give you some samples of content. Run it by them, see what they think. I think height's a big thing. Too high, they're going to see them. So if we can make it work for both of them, that's my opinion.
I mean, I would recommend that you reach out to either an electrician or electrical supply house. They could probably, well, yeah, they could do a lighting plan for you that would show the number of lumens, show no overspill of light onto adjacent properties and all that could be probably achieved. It'd still be sort of a, I would say, a conventional street light rather than like a residential pole light. Because I think that's really what we're looking for. We talked about some of these changes to not allow waivers is the potential that if this ever did become a much more commercially used road, that we'd want it to be developed that way initially or at least have the capability. The sidewalks, I'm indifferent to as far as which side of the road. If there's a reason for function that it is on, I'm going to call it the what side of plan side of the road rather than the south, then there's a, you know, a crosswalk or something at the end, I think that's all right. Is that something that we could ask to review on that?
Yeah.
I don't think that's really a deal breaker either way.
Yeah. I mean, we can. I did kind of review this, I mean, it just came in today, but over the phone with Scott Turner, Bynum Partners. And, you know, like you said, you can build this new version, you know, to comply with everything. But, you know, he felt that for this location, for this section of the road, if it ever gets extended, you'd look at the rest of it functionally, perhaps a little differently. But for this section of the road, he felt that the country drainage for the super elevated road would suffice. He did say that it's, you could flip-flop the sidewalk on this side because you do have, of course, if you do excavate for a basin, it'll be lower than, you have pretty good depth here. So you could still put a basin on the, like the east side of the, you know, closer to the solar field.
Whatever you have.
Yeah, closer to the solar field. I mean, so you can make it work. Also, if you're going to create this additional lot, lot two, having a big basin right in front of the lot isn't particularly desirable. So it may be from a...
Is there a hybrid option for drainage where you could do maybe some catch basins a little further in and keep the road more of the country drainage elevation closer to Clearport Road?
Well, the problem with the catch basins is you have to have a three to cover before you even have a pipe coming out. And we have a fairly shallow groundwater in these pits, about 32 inches on this side and 42 inches on that side. So these are shallow basins. I understand your comment, Mr. Resnick, about the pond in the front yard, but the pond itself is only about, you know, a couple of feet deep, so it almost looks like a meadow once it fills in.
Right.
So, Mr. Chair, I was just going to say, so I would like to see the peer review comments on it. I know we just got, this is the first time seeing it.
Yeah.
And, I mean, he mentioned the neighbors wouldn't want to see the buildup on the road, but I don't think the neighbors would want to have flooding in their yards either. So I just want to make sure that we're not creating an issue with flooding. If he's, the water is so concerning, like he's saying, the water table's so high. So I think we, I would like to see the peer review comments if we could.
So, do you have anything on this? Really what they're here tonight to do is, they were hoping to ask us which path to go, country drainage or conventional?
I mean, the country drain appears to be the lesser of the two evils, so to speak. The other one, the high elevation one, I think would, in my opinion, cause more issues for neighbors than the country one would. cause more issues for neighbors than the country one would.
Yeah, I agree. Jack, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the country version. I think elevating the area is not a real good idea for the neighbors. And I'd be concerned as in Michelle, that we make sure that any of that water doesn't work over towards the neighbors. We want to keep it in the proper area.
John, do you have any comment on this?
No, same with everyone about the country drainage because that retaining wall might be something to issue later. But I would go with the country drainage.
So, just one confirmation from Scott Turner on that. But I think that's probably the way the board would go. I guess my one realistic point up is the runoff off the cul-de-sac. I'm not really fond of that just as a spillway. Is there some way that that could be a... More of a structure?
Yeah, I mean, we've got, we're proposing a rain garden. You're looking for more of a pond or...
Oh, no, the actual rain garden, whatever recharge method is fine. I really want to see how you, a better method of getting it through the Cape Cod burn, you know, just not being a runoff, washout, spillway. You know, I'd like to see something, again, that from pavement to the rain garden to be more of a permanent structure. And I don't know that that exists. But even the construction, whatever you do, I'd like that to not be a long-term maintenance issue that, you know... I think I know where I'm going with that. If you can't do the catch basins and country drainage is the best method, I just would like to see a better structure right there.
I don't have any other thing to present. Just any other questions from the board?
I would mention the entrance. We were asking a waiver on most of the entrance.
Yeah, I think we had talked about that before already. At one of our previous meetings, Derek had brought my attention they do need to ask for a waiver because the road has more than a 10% angle of 90 degrees. Is that the...
Well, we don't have property line radiuses, but we have the 30-foot, we can put in the 30-foot curb radius.
Right.
That fits, but obviously we'll come, you know, the property comes to an angle on both corners.
Right, so the waiver is because the road's not at a 90, it's coming off at that angle. And so their option would be bring this subdivision over to Harcourt, which is a more residential area. So I had said, well, proceed over here. And we've discussed, but I think we do need to grant that waiver rather than see them go to a more residential neighborhood. And it is already an existing road.
Mr. Chairman, from A.D. Yeah, and obviously we have a lot of traffic that comes in and out of there because we are a golf course. The roads have never, we've never had any flooding on the roads. We've never had any flooding with the existing basin we have now. So I don't, and I don't think this road's gonna be any bigger than we have now. So I don't think we're gonna see any drainage problems. And obviously, I wouldn't want that anyways. But right now, nothing goes to my neighbors and nothing's coming to my neighbors.
I thought, I remember people speaking to it though, the last time. Were there a lot of concerns about water runoff?
I thought it was further down.
It was focused, I think, on Harcourt.
Yeah, that was it.
Yeah, and that's where, by giving this waiver, we're keeping them away from there. Anybody else? So I would say you're good to proceed with country drainage. Mark, you'll just follow up with Scott Turner just to confirm that he feels that that's the best method.
Yep.
If that changes after he reviews those plans a little bit better, please let them know. Dick, did you want to speak to this?
I'm catching up on this because I haven't been involved very much. But one of the questions that was typically asked by one of the previous planning board people was line of sight issues based on what you were talking about. Yeah, it's a golf course, but we still don't know the number of houses and the number of cars. It's a nice road, but I don't know with this configuration if there are or aren't. And that might be a detailed point of detail.
Are or aren't the lines of sight?
Are they adequate based on this?
With this existing road?
I know, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Okay.
As, since you're visiting it, I'm just re-asking a question that sometimes gets asked, that's all.
So he is saying that he's asking for a waiver for that churning base.
Gotcha.
So it probably is what his clears would like it to be.
Thank you.
Mark, any other planning board members have any comments? Did you have a date specific that you'd like to continue to?
Yeah, I mean, as soon as we can hear from the peer review consultant, we'll submit revised definitive plans in a month.
Well, so we're supposed to, on public hearing, continue them to a date specific. So our next meeting is April 27. If you don't feel...
I'd go to the next one.
Yeah, the next one would be more comfortable.
Give him more time.
Okay, I'm not looking to rush you as much as if you thought you could get it done for the 27th, we can put you on the agenda. You can't make it back, you can just call, reach out and ask us to continue.
Yeah. No, I think we could go to the next one. That way, peer review has plenty of time to do that. So it'll be a month from.
So May 11th. Are we good with that?
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion to continue the public hearing for 44 Clear Pond Road until May 11th at 7:00 PM. I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Chairman, thank you and the board members.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna jump around a little bit here. Going to go to the reorganization of the planning board. We re-edited the election. We have a new member, John Cabral. After reelection, all boards should reorganize. So...
Well, I think you've been doing a great job. I'll move to appoint Mark Knox, chairman.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That said, I would like to make a motion to have Michelle McCaffrey be the vice chair.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The board is reorganized. Kathy, that's not quite as important as the select board, but do you send a memo out?
I do.
We also tonight need to appoint a new Serphead representative. Nora has been doing that job. I spoke to her a little bit before tonight's meeting. She would still be willing to take on that responsibility. So without any opposition, I would make a motion to have Nora appointed, re-appointed as the Serphead representative for the planning board.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Nora. I think we have to fill this out and get it back through. Somebody? Serphead, 40R. So I'm gonna jump back to the, well, housing, well, MBTA communities discussion with Taylor Perez. We're gonna continue that? Because she's not present, will they be at our next meeting? Or do you have something you wanna...
So for the MBTA communities, they have submitted their report, which you received copies of. That report... That report, I thought I had one in front of me, but the... So basically, the report indicated that our current 40R district complies not only with, in the language, in requiring or allowing the required density that the state is asking communities to adopt within their MBTA community areas. But not only is the language, but they evaluated our current 40R zoning district and that we have excess capacity in that district over what was constructed. So in their opinion, not only is the language compliant, but the district itself is compliant. So their next step would be to complete the compliance application for the state and submit that to the select board who need to...
Ask that to Catherine?
We can email it.
Who needs to sign it and submit it for review by DHCD.
So, I mean, I think everybody's on board with that happening. Do we need to make a motion to let that proceed or can we just...
Well, I thought that our discussion the other night said we were gonna just get this and kind of hold for, because we don't have to comply until 2025. So I didn't think we were moving forward quite yet.
Well, if we comply, we don't have to do anything.
Yeah, I thought, I thought if we complied, we were gonna go forward. If we didn't comply, we were gonna hold.
We agreed that we didn't want to create more zoning.
Right, but with complying, then now, you know, we're saying, yes, we're for this. We're moving forward. Then, you know, when it comes down to Free Town, you know what? I thought we wanted to leave it open to the, you know, the chance of basically saying, you know, we're not complying as well. Because, because it's gonna have an effect on the schools if, if... So if the zoning doesn't pass at Free Town, because they have to create it. So I thought we were gonna hold for now and wait until we have some more conversations and figure out what's going on.
Even though we're in compliance, you're wanting to hold?
Just because, you know, like an alliance is stronger than a single town on its own. And because we wanted to reach out to the other combined school districts and see what they're doing as well. I don't, I don't think it's, we're not in a rush to comply. We have until 2025, so...
Is there a deadline for this to be submitted?
No, we're, we've already met the first, in Jan, yeah, in January, we did.
So, so, yes, so we've filed our action plans, so we're in compliance. We've received a grant to do the evaluation of our existing district and also as part of that grant to look at areas for another district if we weren't in compliance. So now that we're in compliance, or at least in Serphead's opinion, we're in compliance, that needs to have an application completed and submitted to DHCD for their review and determination. The sooner we find out whether DHCD decides that we're in compliance, that gives us a longer period of time, if we're not in compliance, to figure out and get feedback from DHCD about what we would need to do. So...
Oh, so that, I see the reason why you want to hold.
So, you know, but the decision whether to submit that or not is vested in the select board. At the last select board's meeting, they did ask me to reach out to Free Town, which I did. And Free Town is in the process of trying to evaluate how they are going to comply. They are of the opinion that they would like to comply. They, of course, just as we would if we're looking for another district. It's not, you know, there's opposition and there's concern in the community about adding all this, the additional housing. But they're gonna make their best efforts to bring forth to town meeting something that would comply.
One so town meeting?
Well, it wouldn't be until the fall at the earliest. They're waiting. DHCD, so as part of being a MBTA community with a station within their community, they, a certain percentage of their housing needs to be within a half a mile. And so DHCD did an evaluation of that area to kind of calculate what percentage. And there was a mistake made in the calculation. So it's being recalculated. So I don't know whether they're gonna be able to...
They'll have delays.
Yeah, they have their own whole, you know, their town process and whether it gets delayed and it takes longer. That's kind of unknown at this point, but they are trying to comply.
Okay. So, help me, I guess I'm a little slow, Nora. I saw the light bulb go off, so...
Well, if we turn in the compliance...
If we turn to see if we comply?
And Free Town ends up having a vote to not comply, I guess my thought is, to Michelle's point, we have a little bit of a weaker stance.
Why?
Because we wouldn't be combining with Free Town in fighting to not comply.
Don't we, as a town, want to comply?
Well, we don't want them to have to comply if they, you know, either, honestly. Because that affects us as well.
Reiterate that this is a state law passed by the legislature.
But any top-down mandate is not a good thing.
But it's being contested.
Exactly. And Middleborough is not complying, Berkeley's also not complying. And I'm sure there's others, that's just...
Don't we lose a lot of state grants if we don't comply?
There's just, there's a few grants that are tied to it, but, but grants are never guaranteed.
Right.
So also, schools cost a lot more bill than a grant is gonna...
I would want, in the school system, if we get a load of...
Well, right now, I think, you know...
What do they have to say?
But that's Free, it's Free Town and Sonnet.
That's one town. Only one town there.
Yeah.
Sonnet is a village of Free Town.
Right.
So, all right, so if we, the select board sends this in to see if we comply, and they say we comply, then we don't do anything. But then if we don't comply, that's when we would choose to continue to not do anything.
Well, I think we have time, we have plenty of time to figure it out, too. You know, to meet with these other towns that we've discussed. And my concern is, I had actually asked to be, you know, to have us included on... Did you see any correspondence with Free Town? Because I didn't. I was hoping to see that correspondence.
Leah shared something with me today about, I'll make sure that I share that with everybody. It wasn't anything earthbreaking, I think, as much as just contact.
Oh, just, but that was from Carlos, not from us to him.
Correct.
So regardless of what we decide, select board can choose...
Yes.
To go whichever direction they want to go.
I think, in all honesty, if we just said, send the application to see if we comply. Everything already exists. We're not making a change at that point. I guess I'm...
So you're saying wait until it comes back as to whether we are in compliance? Or if we're not, then we can continue not to do anything?
We can have those discussions at that time.
That's when we revisit it. We're really not making a decision at this point. We're just sending in to see if we comply.
I think we're actually sending in our compliance, saying, here, we believe we comply for these reasons.
Well, with, with the caveat that it's, Serphead thinks we apply.
That's correct. Serphead thinks we comply and Serphead will fill out the...
We don't have to add any high-density housing because it's already there, already zoned for. Some's already built. We're not creating another zone. So the town stays eligible for all the grant money. And we don't make any zoning changes. Nothing has to go to town meeting to make any zoning larger. But then if they say we don't comply, then yeah, we can start that fight because I don't think we want to add it anymore.
But so all I'm saying is that we are currently in compliance. We don't need to comply until the end of 2025. So we could wait a year and then still, you know, submit it and then still have six months to comply if we aren't compliant. So I don't see the rush personally.
If we, you know, if we comply in 2025 and Free Town complies...
That's what I mean. Let's wait and see how things go.
Is that gonna overlook, therefore, will the housing that will come in adversely affect the school system? And so is the state willing to help us out financially?
Not for schools.
I think, there's a couple of different parts to that.
Oh, yeah?
The Free Town will be more affected. My understanding is that they will have to pick up the difference for increased number of students. It's only if a new school needs to be built that that's what will affect us.
And class size as well, and teachers. We'd have to pay salaries.
Dick, do you want to speak first?
You just hit on my...
You like that?
Okay, clearly, the state is committed to more housing in MBTA communities. We know what the negative impact is. And I heard somebody say you're not gonna get any more money for schools.
Right, they came out and said that in an article this week.
So that's a good negotiating position for the state to take. But we just approved 44 houses behind the CBS procedures on a little postage stamp block, okay? There's nothing to say in these discussions that we couldn't say we qualify for and have the space for a certain amount, but we want to reserve some of that for senior housing, okay? And that's gonna reduce students as opposed to today, this is what the law is, and five years from now, they say we want to increase that to a larger zone. It seems to me we should be thinking about, is there any poker playing that goes on that benefits Lakeville? In other words, as you're going through these discussions, they would love for Lakeville to say, we've got it nailed, and a year earlier, moving forward, gives them a feather in their cap. Because there's a lot of uncertainty that's going on through this, especially if there's litigation being talked about by communities that say they're not gonna go along with it because of devastating effect on the schools. And you hit on a big one in terms of Free Town, because we're a regional high school. I mean, we already know what's going on over by the quarry in terms of what they're talking about over there in terms of potential housing. So, you know, we might find ourselves in a desperate situation much sooner than we think. So I think there's a lot of unknown. And if you're in compliance, what more could the state ask? Unless what? There's an incentive discussed or a provision that allows us some maneuverability. For example, in the 4B, you've got a certain amount of affordable housing and then at-market housing. Why can't there be a piggyback element that says we also provide some senior housing? Now, they'll come back and say, well, there's nothing preventing seniors from buying the at-market prices, but reserving them at least puts it into our planning, and it wouldn't get built until they got sold.
So stay right here.
I'm just throwing it out for thought.
Stay right here. Seeing as we feel like the discussion we've been on is going nowhere, and obviously nowhere, it just doesn't seem like we're gonna walk away with a resolution. But you had brought up the quarry. I think you're talking about Rocky Woods. So we had a site visit the other day. I got an email from the chairman of the select board today. The chairman of the ZBA was included. And Chairman Day had asked if I would ask for comments tonight on that 50B application for that Rocky Woods. Something I had learned during the initial presentation, the Mass Housing representative was there, and the applicant has proposed a certain number of those homes to be senior homes. There was a little bit of a back and forth between the applicant and the Mass Housing gentleman. And basically, the applicant said, I know you don't like that. And he said, well, it's not that we don't like it. If you have a need, we allow it. So that is something that's happening there, and that is a component. So I think that if we're asked as a board or anybody wants to put it in public comment, now is the time. My personal feeling is that the planning board should say that a certain amount of that should be designated as senior housing.
I just look back at the history of LeBaron and how LeBaron's board... But I'm just looking at LeBaron's board kept everybody afloat by postponing the affordable housing component of that. Okay, now, the outcome is it's no longer a senior housing area.
It evolves from what it is.
Exactly, so I keep coming back to, as they're trying to build in affordable, we know that the developer wants as many at-market as they can get. I'm just sitting there saying, at least the senior component fills a community need, but it also reduces the potential number of students, not necessarily. And we all still have the hospital property where we know that that developer has got six lots, that any one of them could be 4B. And I sit back and I'm saying, they wouldn't have put 44 senior rental units there unless they thought they were gonna be able to put them in there. You know, and I just keep coming back to, unless you build it in, you're not planning for the five-year plan of... I mean, I have many friends that live in Middleborough that said, we'd love to live in Lakeville if there was more senior housing. Most of them end up in the trailer parks, which is fine, because it's affordable. I mean, I have nothing against those trailer parks. I think for senior housing, I think they're marvelous eventually.
They're maintained, they're very nice.
Exactly. Anyway, I'm just being parochial in saying, as we go forward, think about... I mean, you just hit the nail on the head. It's not that we're against it, okay? There has to be a need. And I'm sitting back, I think there's a need. A lot of people are getting older. So, I think that's all I have.
So again, I was asked to ask comments on... And I know a lot of the planning board members haven't seen the plan yet, but...
Well, I think Ari did distribute it, right?
Have you seen the plan for Rocky Woods?
Yes.
Did you see it?
I saw that.
Did you see it, Jack? How many homes was it total?
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
And so he is proposing a senior portion. And as I said, Mass Housing gentleman, it's not always allowed, but if there is a need... And I think that that should be, if not our only comment, it should be one of our main comments, that we want to see a substantial portion of that to be, have a senior age restricted component to that.
I mean, my main comment is, it's a priority protection parcel. So, you know, I think...
I just hope about the...
It's amazing that we got this far with it, I guess.
What's that, Jack?
I just don't know how we can continue to build housing and the impact it has on our infrastructure and the school system. We need some industry.
Well, that's the thing. That's the most advantageous location for industry, but it's not a very welcomed discussion. You know, when we're talking warehouses and industrial. My concern right now, I agree with the senior housing. If it goes forward, I agree with the senior housing. And I think it needs to be quantified as to how many units that should be. You know, it can't be five units. Okay, we did senior housing. I'm more concerned about the geological and potentially archaeological...
Artifacts?
Artifacts that are purported to be on that property.
I agree, and I think the lady that came from the... Native American came and spoke to that.
Yeah.
I agree.
Absolutely.
And I think the developer agreed to back off on that. I mean, I don't... Did he agree to give them...
Yeah, but it hasn't been defined what area it really is, generally.
I agree, I think, you know, we need to go slow in that area.
So that'd be my comment. Go slow and find out the implications of that area.
I think they do need to do a complete archaeological dig, is what they're gonna have to do. And the tribal, the tribal, you know, leaders will have to, you know, attend that.
Is there anyone in the town that's gonna shepherd that along?
All right, I'm gonna rein this back in, just so we can...
I know the chief.
Get a few things done here. Do you want to take a short period of time to think about comments on the Rocky Woods' proposed development and then maybe send them to me and Mark and Kathy so that those can be passed along?
Well, is there any timeline that we're up against on this? I know there's a purchase and sales agreement.
In a month, they need to be submitted to...
The select board is meeting 4/24, so I'm sure they probably want it by then.
So if you... Yeah, if you're gonna submit it to the select board, it would be by, oh, actually by...
When do they put their agenda out?
24th Tuesday.
They are meeting on Tuesday for their agenda, and they put it out on Thursday.
They're looking for comments, because their April 24th meeting, they wanted to respond to the mass housing within the limit of a lot of time.
So you would need comments by the 18th, next Tuesday? Is that what you're saying, Mark?
They need to know whether to put discussion of comments on their agenda on Tuesday, and your comments could come in by Thursday.
Like I said, send it to me, Mark, and Kathy, and we'll get that along. I think it's important that we do comment, we don't not. And anybody can comment whatever they want. If you want to make a group comment right now from the planning board, or if it's individuals, I think either one is fine. Certainly, I think a group comment... I would say, we'd like to see at least 20% senior housing.
I'm just, honestly, like I... Like I said, I think an archaeological dig... And I did send like some documentation myself.
I already agree with that, too.
So first that, before we get to the housing.
That's our first priority, and then...
Exploration for historical artifacts from Native Americans should be exhausted prior to development.
Absolutely.
Would have agreed to, I mean, if we would present it to the Native...
Do you want to take notes on that, or...
Yeah.
Are you drafting this?
I will.
I think it's important to get all that stuff in there. Okay, so that wasn't even on the agenda, but we can consider that done. Anybody who wants to add comments, pass them along by next Tuesday. Back to the housing production plan, Mark.
Housing production plan, okay. Obviously, Taylor is not here. I figured that it would be best to discuss that with Taylor. And she is also gonna have one of the other housing people here.
Could you set either a meeting or a phone call with myself, you, and her prior to our next meeting?
Sure.
I'd like to have a discussion just to understand some of the parameters of what the state expects, what's actually required. And just to have that information prior. So if you could set something up next week, I'd like to have that meeting. Even if it's Zoom, whatever.
Sure.
Is everybody all right with that?
So if I may, so I am concerned that we have to get this done. So I know we've continued it a bunch. And, you know, we've had the different drafts, and we just, we have this new cleaned-up one. Could we at least maybe have everyone look through it and...
The cleaned-up one?
Yeah, and have, I guess, comments ready for the next meeting so that, because I, we really need to get it moving. And so even if, even if, you know, Serphead says, oh, you know, we don't recommend this, it says right in these guidelines that the department shall conduct an initial 30-day completeness review, and it will notify the municipality of any deficiency and offer an opportunity to remedy the deficiency. So if there's anything missing, they'll let us know.
Maybe, yes.
There should be two that look like that.
There should be two. One has Serphead written across the top. Yeah, that's the one that was submitted by Serphead.
You want us to go through that?
So, Michelle, I talked to her about kind of beating in the middle of her initial comments. So that's very... I think a middle ground between the two. I think most everything is in there.
There was one redlining section still.
If you could get a copy of that to Taylor for our discussion?
Michelle, could you email that to me, this third version?
Yep.
And then I can forward it to them so they can review it so that they'll be prepared for the meeting, probably on the 24th.
Yeah, have them ready for that, but if we could meet like next Wednesday or something on Zoom or whatever.
Yes, good.
Okay. Everybody go through that? Kind of get that resolved so we can make a vote for the next meeting to approve the housing production plan? So we're gonna continue the discussion on the MBTA communities of the Select Board Act, the Act. There's not much we can do about that. So item number seven on the agenda is for the planning board to discuss possible meetings of communication with nearby communities. I know Mark, you had, somehow, you said Free Town.
Yes.
Were you able to contact any other communities that were mentioned, kind of like the Bridgewater, Rainham area or...
Not, not, not since the select board meeting Monday, yeah, just...
Does anybody else want to make comments? I mean, we did talk about that on Monday. Nothing's really transpired since then.
Yeah, that's why I just, I think we should just hold and pursue that, see what else we can dig up.
All right. We reorganized, we did the Serphead thing. Planning board goals, but I'm gonna jump ahead. We'll come back to that one. We have two zoning board of appeals petitions. One is for 26 Rush Pond Road, and the other one is for 14 Coombe Street. Was that one added on late, Kathy? Is that why that's highlighted? I looked through it, they looked both residential. One was a septic upgrade, the other one was...
My sport.
Some fortune.
Can you come up, please?
Sure, thank you.
Which applicant are you?
26, 26 Rush Pond, 150 feet off the cul-de-sac. 110, 10 blocks of nearest driveway.
So the good news is, you're residential?
Yes.
We typically don't even comment on these. It gets put on the agenda, but we like to stay involved in the business, industrial properties. We... We're not gonna fight what you want to do.
Okay.
So we totally leave all that stuff up to the zoning board of appeals.
So I'm safe to move on to zoning, really?
Yeah, I'm gonna move that we, if everybody agrees, make no comment on 26 Rush Pond Road and 14 Coombe Street.
I'll second for just a comment. I did check with a neighbor close to you, and she had, you know, said, he's at the end of the cul-de-sac. It doesn't affect anybody's view or anything, so...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I have a motion in a second for no comment. All in favor?
Right.
Bye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a great night.
Sorry, I couldn't know, I would've done that sooner.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna interrupt, it was interesting. I'd still love to see what senior housing is in Lakeville. I want to know what it costs to. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Have a good one.
I'll make a motion to make no comment on McCready, 14 Coombe Street.
I think I lumped them.
Oh, you did? Oh, I thought you did.
I clussed them both. Uh, so we have discussed planning board goals. And I know I had, is this what we're talking about, Nora?
That is.
Okay.
Sorry it's not bigger, especially since I don't have any glasses on.
Well, you've got up to 14 things now.
Yeah, the challenge is, as I expressed in the beginning, I don't like a lot of goals. But when you look at this, some of these are shared goals, some of them are not. And it was taking the list that Mark had, some comment and input by Michelle, and seeing what best fit. So if you want, we can go through these real quickly. This is, I know something that's been a topic at our meetings, I think since I joined the board. And I know we would rather progress sooner than later. The one thing I want everyone to understand, a goal is fluid. It's fluid based primarily on what else is coming before this board. But it's also those things that we want to try to accomplish within a period of time. They're for the benefit of us as individuals, us as a board, and then also for the community. So the community now understands what's our goal. Do we just sit here for the things that come before us? Or are there things that we want to work on for the betterment of the town? So the first thing I have down is we need to do a review of the housing production plan. And that's kind of being done now in cooperation with Spearhead. Spearhead, maybe you want to change your mind about who. So I don't think there's much of a discussion that we need to do about that right now. The second is a yearly review of the planning department, not depot, goals to ensure goals are being met. That's a standard, you know, we want to review the goals periodically, maybe it's quarterly, just to make sure.
Well, you got to talk about updating this list.
Yes.
So hopefully at our next meeting, we're crossing off number one.
Oh, not until it's completed. It's not completed yet.
Hoping at our next meeting.
Right, and then it will get crossed off.
Right, that's my point of, your item number two is to take action like complete number one.
Yes.
Take it off the list.
Correct, correct.
Go on.
I have established individual goals for planner and support staff. And that's those things that are pertinent to be completed for the planning board to, for us to complete the things that we have. Number four is establish tracking and map a buildable land area. I think we know that there's land, whether it comes out of 61A, whether it's just sitting there doing nothing, that we need to look at to be, what do we want to do with that property? You know, what do we want to see happen with that property? Along with that is we need to reclassify, identify properties for reclassification based on its usage. Goes in line with what Dick was saying as far as looking at the zoning map and making sure that it is noted specific to the zone that it's in.
So if I can, so this number four, establish the tracking, tracking and map buildable land area?
Yep.
That is also what will determine where we are for the other safe harbor for 40B, which is that 0.5% of buildable land area as well.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, so that's an important thing.
Well, and that's where we talk about the, Mark had brought it up. And I've done some research and I think I've kind of flipped on what my initial thought was on an adult entertainment district. There was no one, I flipped two. Never mind.
We're getting there with her? Where's it going?
Yeah. Review the current zoning map, as I just alluded to. We need to make sure that it's compatible with the existing uses. And we need to make sure we keep that up to date. Complete the review of 40R, 40B and 3A. Mark, that was something that we talked about several meetings ago. I don't know if we still feel as strongly with the 40R and that we want to keep continuing with it or what we want to do with that. But I have a decision that we should probably have that finalized as to what we want to do by July 23rd. We want to review Lakeville owned properties to determine if any are buildable, sellable and are developable by the town, particularly into senior housing, recreational use. There's 103 or 106 properties that the town owns. Now, I understand some of them are protected. But I'd like to know, when I go through and I look at the list of property, there's one right behind my house. It's 30 acres. It seems to be landlocked, but it's not. I think there's one little entrance. Is that a piece of property we should be looking at developing into maybe a staged senior housing? It's more a retirement community that goes from assisted living to non-assisted living. You know, it's more of a nursing house. So those are the type of things that we need to look at. Work with, review Lakeville owned properties, work with developers to bring housing identified through the survey that was done by the town. Number eight is review planning board rules and guidelines to ensure consistency and updates. I have to tell you, until I got a copy of it, I never really looked at the rules and guidelines for the planning board. So I think it's something that we can, can take a look at. I don't think it would be a very long and involved process, but I think it's something we need to do. There are some pretty outdated things in there.
We could get the five-year plan on that one.
Yeah. We've been talking about revisiting that for the last three years.
Well, I wasn't sure how hectic it would become, so yes. Yeah, target a complete review within five years. Electronic agendas to be delivered weekly by noon or Friday preceding the meeting. Hold the, and I personally liked that we got the agenda and the packet early this week. It gave me time to look into things. I'm sorry, I didn't know about the visit to Rocky Woods or I would have gone to that as well. And I think for our support team's benefit, it's important that we hold the vendors, the builders, the developers to the deadline that enables you to make the deadline of having the information to us by that Friday. I'd like us to have a combined meeting with CPA and COMCOM. I thought the meeting that we did with the select board was, was very good, even though it was one specific topic. But I thought it was good so we all kind of have an understanding of where we stand, where they stand, and how do we meet in the middle.
What about open space?
If you want, we can put it there. If you want to put open space on, open space. Gladly add it. And then the implication of applicable master plan goals, updating priority protection areas. I was unaware that Rocky Wood was a priority protection area until you said something in an email to me about it.
Yeah.
So I really want to make sure that we identify what those priority protection areas are for the town.
So the master plan has a map?
Okay.
Yes, that shows those areas and open space works to designate those. So, you know, just going back to where you said about the walk, it really would have been nice to get that information. And I know open space probably should have been invited as well. So I think we need, when we're talking about these, you know, staff goals, I definitely want to see more communication. I want to see, you know, chair, vice chair copied on emails with developers, zoning matters, all these things. It shouldn't be a silo, it should be, you know, a working group, not, not an individual.
How about I work that into 10, what we're talking about? The delivery agenda, we can include that, strength and need, email communications.
This is true. Who sends out these invitations, invites to go to these different areas like Rocky Woods? Is that?
So I got mine from the conservation commission.
I heard about it just by chance, so I didn't get an invitation, but I think we should have.
Yeah, I think the timing was probably not ideal with the election, changing of boards. In the past, I've seen, in years past, a big email would have been sent out by probably Tracy from the select board's office, where she would have been notified. I mean, she's got that whole list of 100 and however many people. Oftentimes it would go out like that, but I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying.
No, I'm just saying.
Typically that's how it's done, but it happened to be like a week after the election. People are still getting stuff in order from that, so.
Right.
I think.
Is there the opportunity for us to have another tour of Rocky Wood?
Well, honestly, there wasn't much to see because, you know, when you looked into the woods, you couldn't see past that wall, it's so thick. We just went in on, there was an, there is an access road to a cell tower. And once you went in about 300 feet, it kind of hooked a little to the right. And within 200 feet, you were leaving the property that was to be developed. Everything was kind of to the right and behind the houses on Freetown Street. And it would have been like walking through fences of barbed wire. Oh, no, just a.
It was a thick dense forest.
Okay. Have they done any drones? Are there photos of it at all?
Well, I would imagine from what Cora said, there is a native path and proprietor way through that property that the natives have used and the tribes have used. So I'm sure there is a means of accessing parts of that property. Just, we couldn't see from that access road any other paths leading away.
I'm sure that the owner applicant probably would allow another site visit at some point. It's probably going to happen when conservation starts flagging wetlands and stuff. But it is a very, very challenging site. It's, it's not a walk in the park, so to speak. It's bring your rose bush clippers, one in each hand and a helmet.
And wear heavy pants.
Yeah.
If there's interest in doing that, I can arrange that with Mohammed, the owner, so let me know, I can do it.
Well, yeah.
With you.
I think at some point, that may, may be something everyone wants to do. But like I said, right now you're going to be going in on a dirt road that goes in about 500 feet and then it's veering right off the property to continue to the cell tower. It's not part of the develop, the proposed development, so. It was really, it was more of a political and social event than it was us. I'm going to say we, what do you think, Michelle? We were on 300 feet of that property.
Yeah, and about 400, yeah.
180 acres or something is the proposed.
Okay, so it really wasn't much of a site walk. We didn't get to see much of anything, unfortunately.
The whole purpose is, is for mass housing to get any feedback about the site because it's a site of eligibility. It is what Mohammed has applied for to mass housing for financing. So is there something about the site that would make it ineligible for development of the housing? Has nothing to do with the site plan, has nothing to do with the breakdown of units. I mean, Mohammed had a little site plan, he's required to submit it. He, as you, you were, we were together when we talked with the mass housing person about the, how many and which component might be suitable for some age restricted housing. And so that's the entire purpose of this at this stage. Once it gets to conservation for delineation, wetlands and then zoning board, you know, that's where the real, the review of.
The real comments.
The real comments of the design and the layout.
Comprehensive permit.
Yes, through that process.
Right.
And then lastly, adopt a store water, stormwater management bylaw, investigate the transfer of developmental rights by law. I think this, Mark, this was something that was on your list.
The transfer of rights thing?
That's another stormwater management bylaw.
No, but, yeah, so the stormwater management bylaw is something that Environmental Partners was working on. It is required through by the, what is called the MS4 permits, which is something EPA issues to cities and towns. And there's a slowly incremental series of actions towns need to take over the past 10 years to improve and going forward, I don't know what the timeline is. But as far as trying to improve stormwater quality, running off of parking lots and roadways and the like.
So it's not really anything to do with residential, it's more of public areas?
Well, it is residential streets, you know, so when we review new residential streets.
Right.
But, you know, for existing streets that would fall under requirements that our public works director has to follow, like a street sweeping plan or catch basin clean maintenance plan.
Those public ways, it's not private property.
Well, it also then, as, as the, as part of that stormwater, at least it looks like they, they might require permitting for parking lots and review, annual review of whether it's catch basin cleaning or street sweeping and like a maintenance plan. So that is something that's being worked on currently.
Is that part of that, the new MS4 regulations?
Yes, yeah. So, and so that's, that's something that, and so at this point, you know, it's, I believe it would be, it would be going through the public works department. But again, I'm not certain, it's still, you know, being worked on, so.
So would, would this ever be something that comes before this board?
I'm not, not sure at this point.
Can you, I mean, can we find out? Because if it's not something that's going to come, come before the board, I need to take it off the list.
Yeah, there may be portions of it that would be applicable for the.
Large parking lots certainly with more impervious or large rooftop water, you know.
That wouldn't go to CBA before I?
No, when we do site planner review. And it's maybe a large industrial or business property that has large parking areas. You're going to catch a lot of the water to control stormwater runoff. That's, I would say, where a stormwater bylaw would, you would implement.
So we, so we already require that under site plan review. And I mean, we refer to the state stormwater design guidelines. That reference to the guidelines and the requirements under that may or may not be stringent enough under the new EPA rules. So we may have to adopt something even more stringent. But again, that's kind of a work in progress.
So this kind of needs to go to the five-year plan.
That's correct. And some of it may be have to be adopted through a general bylaw that would require permitting through the public works department. So, so there are, there could be multiple pieces to that.
Yeah, it could fall under a subdivision, it could be a commercial development.
Yep.
Any number of things. Giant building, just a giant building with all the, a flat roof that catches all that water and it's got to recharge somehow, so.
And then you have TDR here, transfer development rights. That's something that's in the master plan, but I don't recommend that we pursue that at all. So that's, that's a.
Thank you.
Very complicated exercise. And I don't think we have enough sending and receiving properties for that to be pursued. So.
Okay.
And then, so a couple other comments about what you have, just going back a little bit under the implementation of applicable master plan goals. I mean, we do have a master plan implementation committee that does meet approximately quarterly that reviews all the goals. They go through with Ari and with me sometimes and other department heads. Some of those, those goals and kind of where we're at.
My thought here was just to make sure that we're reviewing what's been characterized as something the planning board.
So for example, the transfer development rights is in there. And, you know, I've explained to them that, you know, it's not something that I would recommend that we work on. So, and then you also have the updating the priority protection areas. That is, so that was created around before 2007, I think. Or eight was the first time that Serpeth did a priority protection, priority development areas. It's a combination. It's meant to help communities establish which areas they want for economic development, as Jack was talking about, and other areas for protection, like Michelle was talking about. So I think that plan was updated once in.
2013?
2013, okay. And that might have been the last time. And then, so now they've received additional funding because the, it's funded in part, as part of the South Coast Rail. So that's how it came about to get funded. And I think this is, I don't know whether there'll be additional rounds of funding, but. So we will be contacted by Serpeth. And they will be working on updating that. I don't know what board or boards they will be contacting to put that together, whether it's the planning board, whether it goes through the select board, whether it goes through multiple boards. But that is something that is a work in progress.
Okay.
So.
What I'd like to do then, Mark, is based on the comments, I want to clean this up.
Yep.
And the final one for our next meeting, for probably us to vote on.
I will caution you on. You had the Lakeville properties, but then you also had.
Identified.
Number four?
Yep.
We need to be very, very, very careful when you publicly start talking about this, some of that stuff, it's blowing a dog whistle for people to then act on it. So I, I. some of that stuff, it's blowing a dog whistle for people to then act on it, so, I...
I got your phone.
It'll potentially bring in 10 sets of plans of zoning freezes if you start saying, we think we should rezone that parcel, and it becomes this lengthy discussion about, hey, yeah, hey, no, and before you know it, we'll have a bunch of plans coming in for a subdivision that's never gonna be built just to freeze the zoning, 'cause they're fear that they might lose a silly zoning use, there're plenty of them on the map, but we need to be cautious about that.
And actually, if I could speak to this one, just 'cause I think this is one that I had suggested, the review of the current zoning map, just in speaking with Nate, he said that we actually have certain uses that are in place, and maybe we should review what those are, and if they are compatible with that zone. Not to talk about changing it, but to compare what the existing use is compared to what the zoning map shows, yeah? And if, if, if they're, if they're finding the way they are, or if there's something that we could look at.
Which that is a page in the master plan, has that.
Okay.
Zoning by use. There is a zoning map, it's, it's not a zoning map, but it's a map of the town with the...
The uses.
It's color-coded by the use, not the actual zoning. It's not perfect, but...
I'll look at the master plan too, to see if that's been assigned to the planning board to keep up there.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so, absolutely, Nora, go right ahead, clean that up. I think it's a really, really good spot.
I'd like to see if, I'm sorry, if, if we can get it cleaned up, maybe put some lines on it too, just 'cause that's what I was like grabbing the...
They don't have lines on it.
But so, even if we could...
No, they don't have lines.
Connect the dots to get the...
Me too.
I don't know if we could, if we wanna put it on the website, or if we wanna just keep it in our packets on a monthly basis, or like track it somehow?
I think we, if I may, I think we keep it in our packet.
Yeah.
Periodic updates.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think having it for us to keep action on certain things at the top of the list is wise, and also to take them off when we complete the task.
I will keep everybody abreast of what happens at the master plan meeting next week on the 19th.
Okay.
Results to...
You're going to that meeting?
Yeah.
He's, he's on the committee.
Uh, so, I have an announcement, our next meeting is April 27th at 7:00 PM here at the police station meeting room. We have a set of minutes to approve, this was a remote meeting back in February. Did everybody get a chance to review these?
I gave Kathy my comments, looks good now.
Yep.
So, that said, I make a...
I think that we approve the minutes of the...
Yeah, February 23rd.
February 23rd meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, minutes are approved. Did we have any correspondence, Mark?
Did not from the planning board folder, we had some. Most of them were your normal garages in additions. There were a couple interesting ones, that were another marijuana retail location in another town, a couple small warehouses, but not, nothing.
Are you watching the discussions and, I think, the buildings coming soon to be repurposed?
Uh, no, I'm not, I just know of it, but not following.
I'm worried about a lot of Lakeville residents, 'cause there are others.
Mm-hmm, yeah, right. I believe I've seen a site plan on their webpage, but it's pretty, it's not very detailed, at least the first round that I saw.
Dick, do you wanna say anything else tonight?
Uh, I don't wanna say anything.
Come on, Dick.
You're adjourned, and I can say what I wanna say after the meeting.
If there's nothing else, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our motion, uh, meeting is adjourned.